City Council, a regular meeting to order here at 7:00 PM. Roll call, looks like we're missing Councilmember Hallstrom this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). To the United States of America, to a republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, I would like to see us move Item 5G down to 10 in between D and E. We do the budget first and then approve any pay raises. That way, we know if we're going to be able to do it.
You're saying remove 5G from the consent and put it as...
After the budget.
10E?
Yeah, E and then change E to F and F to G.
F to G. Okay. Okay, we've got a mo...
I'll move then the agenda with those...
Would that be now or would that be once you get to the consent agenda?
No, we can do it right now because it's approval of the agenda and if we change the agenda, then we'd have to go back and change it again.
Okay.
So I'll move that we adopt the agenda with the...
Noted changes?
Yeah, with the changes.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the agenda with noted changes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
And again, Mr. Mayor, that was the amended agenda.
Yes, yes, amended with noted changes. Number five, consent agenda with A through G now, removing G, A through H minus the G for the consent agenda. For a motion or questions on that?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The amended consent?
The amended consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the amended consent agendas. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, next is matters on the floor. Any wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name, and address the council.
Kenny Nelson, 509 Third Avenue. I've been looking through the packet for the last few months and one thing I've kind of noticed is it seems like a lot of information seems to be getting left out. First is like this packet, if you look at the buying the radios for the fire department, I know that's unnecessary, but it, there's not in there explaining, you know, like, hey, the county's buying these for us and then we're going to lease them and the leasing number's going to be $30,000. It just says, "We budgeted for it," and I have to go then look at the budget to see what we budgeted for it and find out that it went from $10,000 to $30,000 for police radios in the fire light and budget. And so I'm concerned that sometimes maybe our city staff is preparing budgets for you guys, which is technically their job, but it's also a job to communicate with residents, to let residents understand what their government is doing and spending its money on and not have to dig through a bunch of paperwork and other stuff to do that. Because the more it seems like when we're trying to conceal stuff in a packet or other areas, people might see that that is smoke and, you know, there's a saying where there's smoke, there's fire. But I believe, I believe that city's job is to communicate what we're doing and how we're doing it and what we're spending our money on so that residents can at least have confidence, even if they disagree with what we're doing. So I would, I would hope that staff maybe look at that and, and try to write memos, not just necessarily for you guys up there, but for anybody reading that packet so that the public can understand, so they don't have to come to you necessarily all the time. So, thank you.
Good evening, I'm George LaSard, Northeast One's Lewis Lodge, address 214 Central. We wanted to work with you guys on the Shop With a Cop opportunity that you have for this, this year. So this week, we, this weekend, we worked on a fundraiser and we'd like to donate to the police department and to the city council, $631 towards that effort. So, I don't know if we were able to take a photo with you guys?
Yeah, perfect. Do you want to just talk, talk a little bit more about what you did and...
Well, we all went back to our roots. I worked at a grocery store when I was super young and somebody decided we should go bag groceries over at Cub and we were there for about six, seven hours, let everybody know what we were bagging their groceries for, you know, just goodwill and then also charitable donations for the city. And we, like I said, we raised about $631 in about, about six hours.
Nice. Should we, will we have to change 7A then to add that to accept the donation?
Yes, you could do that or put it on a future agenda to accept it, however the council wants to do that, or you could direct staff to amend the resolution in 7A to include it if you'd like to do that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think it makes sense. Got to get the money out to the shop with the cops. All right, council, should we get in there with a photo?
(Inaudible)
I'm waiting for the store guy in the back to get in there.
(Applause).
No shorts.
(Inaudible).
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Scott Dallow. I'm from 225 Sixth Avenue, Northeast. What I'd like to talk with, about you guys is, first off, is, I'd like to say thank you. I watched last weeks, two weeks ago, council meeting and I was, I was very impressed by the theme of being concerned about the taxpayers and the onus of having too much tax. I appreciate that very much, so thank you. And I also note that, I think it's, it's a real, it's a real juggling that you guys have to pull off to make sure that the city's taken care of and the taxpayers are taken care of, so, thank you. Do appreciate that. What I am here to talk about is under your new business, number 10A, the Alley Reconstruction Project, the alignment of Alley 5. Have you all familiar with it to some degree? Okay. So I, I and my neighbor Steve would be, some of the, two of the people I think would be most affected by that if it was actually to be aligned to the actual surveyed easement and alley. And where it currently sits, apparently, if I'm reading my documents correctly, is about two feet off when we get to the final north end of the alley. It seems to me logically to leave it and to follow the, I think the correct term was prescriptive rights was one of, you guys had three different options that you could look at as a potential of picking one of them. I would encourage and ask and suggest that you would probably go with the prescriptive rights option, which would leave it where it is, if I understand what prescriptive rights are correctly. It would make sense to me that you wouldn't have to, again, I don't know who's going to pay for it, but no one has to pay for it that way. My neighbor Steve, I spoke with my neighbor to my direct west, who's on the other side of the alley. We all three seem to concur that there seems to be a logic to just leaving it alone. I mean, the alley's been there under prescriptive rights for however many decades. Yes, it's skewed, but it seems to make sense to, for the sake of cost, either to the city or to the homeowners, to just leave it alone, leave it as is. I don't know if that's, yeah, I guess you guys aren't going to necessarily comment at this point, but I would ask if you would consider that that would, the cost to whoever it's going to be, the cost doesn't make sense. And I would ask and I don't expect an answer immediately, but the question of who would pay for these changes if they did need to be made, I'm very confused about how this works. I suppose the onus ideally would be on the homeowner, but at the same time, I'd argue that this is something, like I said, has been in the, this situation it's been in for decades and it's not been an issue. I imagine the first guys that laid out that alley 50-some years ago weren't really concerned about how exact it was, I mean, not even had the exact equipment to do it as correctly as they needed to. But here we are with excellent work from Allison and her group, being very due diligent to find exactly where it should be, and I appreciate that and that's good for them. So again, I ask that you guys would consider that this is probably something that should hopefully just be left worth that, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Scott?
Yes, sir.
What was your address again? Were you 225?
225 Sixth Avenue.
And then Steve is 233? Okay, thank you.
I just have a, two public records requests slash data requests. Since doing it privately through email and I don't get them fulfilled, I'm going to do it publicly. How many officers are TASER certified and when did each officer get certified? Thank you.
Hi, Faith Newman, if it's okay, I don't want my address on record, but if you need it, I can give it to you. I just don't want it on the replay online on CCX. I just want to have the city put out when they're going to open up the city administrator role, when it stops being a dual role, and separate that out and also just avoid any look of impropriety to putting a bigger percentage towards the police department while having somebody who is in that dual role currently as police chief. Thank you.
Any other matters on the floor?
Been a long time since I've been up here. Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Tom Hartkopf, 225 Eighth Avenue, Northeast Oseo. Excuse me, it's like, I like the majority of our Oseo residents are tired of the negative attitude of a few, especially one commentator with an extensive criminal history, including a felony conviction, that gets up at most meetings with often foul and disrespectful language. This person, as far as I can see, is not a property owner that pays taxes in Oseo and this person continually tries to stir an empty pot. I'd like, at the end of the year, on a positive note, our taxes are going up some, yes, they're going up everywhere. Just last week, I believe it was Anoka County stated theirs are going up 16%. And for everybody wondering, your property values have also increased considerably in the last few years. Everything has gone up in prices, just like the grocery store everywhere around us is going up. I'd like to thank our mayor and council and city staff for their hard work and difficult decisions in keeping our tax base as low as they have. They've been working for months to do the difficult job and I don't think people realize how many hours you put into it behind the scenes. It isn't just an hour and a half, two hours at a council meeting every couple of weeks. You really do a lot and I appreciate it. Also, many employee decisions had to be made recently and we now have an administrative city hall group that seems to be working well together. Our police department serves us with a positive attitude. They enjoy engaging with our businesses and residents. A good example is this last week at our mini-dazzle, visit with the local cops and you'll see that they are friendly and they enjoy their job. We're very fortunate to have our police department. If you need help, they're there very quick with great training and equipment from an AED and oxygen to a small Band-Aid. They'll, they'll watch and check your house while you're on vacation or away from home and our police are there for us and they'll take care of your needs. No one likes to get stopped by the police. I've had a lot of complaints about that lately, but if you look at the reports, a lot of, a lot of the times they're stopping people, they give them a warning. And a warning is an education just to keep us all safe. Also, Felicia, the office manager that many people don't see, she'll help you with any needs you have, reports, et cetera. She also spends many hours assisting in the planning for the night train night and many other events. And people always try, some people try to compare Oseo to other big cities. Those of us here know you can't do that. It just, we got great services and it's going to cost us what it costs, but we're willing to pay for it. Our fire department is very professional and now with a full-time chief. They lead their jobs during the day and/or warm bed in the middle of the night to come out to our aid for a fire, an alarm, or a medical issue. They also are at our mini-dazzle in night train night, engaging with everyone, especially our youth, and they are a vital part of our community. Our public works crew, Nick, Josh, Guy, and Kim, they keep our city working. Our streets are clear to snow long before many other cities. They come out during the night regardless of what they, what plans they might have had. If it snows, they're coming out to take care of us so we can drive to work, school, or wherever else we need to go. Any issues they have, that you have, they take care of them quickly. Our parks are mowed in the summer, snow shovelled in the winter, seasonal lights are up and working, barricades for parades and other events. They're always there for us. We're very fortunate to live in our great city. Thank you again, Mayor, council, city staff, all of you, the police department, fire, public works. I really thank you for your service. You are all appreciated. So on a positive note, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and all other holidays celebrated this season, and I wish you all a very happy and positive New Year.
Any other matters on the floor? Third time matters on the floor? All right, moving on. Seven, special business, 7A, accept donations.
Mayor and council, this is whereas the Oseo City Council is generally authorized to accept contributions of real and personal property pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 465.03, and whereas the council agrees that said donation would be a benefit to the citizens of Oseo, and whereas the following has proposed that this contribution to the city of Oseo and the donation be used for a specific purpose as indicated below, City Country Insurance Agency, $250 to mini-dazzle, and that would be adopted today. If you want, we could motion to have this added to the, to the...
Does the council feel about that?
Resolution?
We need a motion to...
They need a motion to...
Add the...
Add it to the...
To change the resolution, and I'm happy to make that motion for $631. From the post to...
The lodge.
Designated fund...
Masonic Lodge.
Masonic Lodge, yeah. Designated fund, police department?
Shop with a cop?
We have shop with the cop. We'll be able to follow that through. Yep.
But, yeah, I'd make that, I'd make the motion to approve this resolution with that addition.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the resolution with the addition of the Shop With a Cop donation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, attorney, teach him, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number 68. Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy?
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. All right, number eight, public hearings, continuation of the 2025 Truth in Taxation public hearing. So it was open if there's any other questions on that, we accept those now. Seeing none. Look for a motion to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion by Councilmember Schultz to close the public hearing on the truth in taxation? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. The public hearing is now closed at 7:20. All right, number nine, no old business in front of us. Number 10, new business, 10A, 2025 Alley Reconstruction Project. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, just a couple, first public hearing for the alley project and authorized preparations of plans and specifications. And this evening, I'd just like to go over something that the design team has discovered with Alley 5 and...
It's just the PDF, I don't know if it'll let you, but we can try, yeah.
We'll give it a try. It's not, it's not a long presentation.
Okay. If not, I'm happy to just scroll through for you.
Thank you so much. So Alley 5 here is the one surrounded by Second Street Northeast, Fifth Ave. Northeast, Third Street Northeast, and Sixth Ave. Northeast. Yeah, it's not advancing. Thank you. So, the proposed alley section, consistent with past projects, is a 12-foot wide alley consistently through the corridor within a 16-foot right-of-way or easement. Next slide, please. All right, so Alley 5 is presenting a bit of a challenge. So the graphic on the left, there's, the green shaded area shows what the alley would look like if it was, I got to make sure I got my, the green shaded one shows the existing alignment. So it's, it's a little hard to see, but it's, instead of just going straight north, south, centered in that easement, it's skewed ever so slightly to the northwest. And then there's a, to show where the existing, sorry, that's the existing, and then the, if it was centered in the easement, included in the packet, and then also here is the, it's kind of a speckled fill in the area. So when the designs team started looking at this, we had a meeting to go through this and, and looking at if it was centered in the easement, it presents a few challenges. So, in particular, if we're moving on the, the northeast side there on the top photo, we would be moving that, that alley very close, if not right up, to that garage slash shed on that property. And then the middle photo, there is a, an existing overhead power pole that we would have to relocate, not, not out of the, you know, it can be done, but we would have to find another location for that and understand that there might be a resident that's not happy when an overhead power pole gets moved. And then the third challenge is there's some heirloom grapevines that Public Works had brought to our attention that are next to the existing alley that would be impacted along with the fence through there. So, so we're seeing a few, a few challenges by centering it. If we leave it where it is, we have on the, on the west side, we're approximately two feet outside of the easement at the very north end of that alley, and then that would taper down. So we have a couple, couple properties there on the northwest side where that easement would be under prescriptive right. So, I didn't want to make a decision on this. I thought that this was to a point where the council should be presented with this challenge so that we can get some direction rather than making a, a decision to move forward one way or another. I just felt it was prudent to come up and bring this to council's attention. Again, bringing, bringing forward some of the challenges with realigning it through the middle and then also looking at, if you could please, to the next slide. Oh, these were just, oh, close-ups, showing each location. Thank you. So, in a nutshell, there's, there's likely two, two options here to consider, either keep it at its current alignment and then staff would be looking for council direction as to whether you would like to keep it as a prescriptive right or if you would like staff to work with the city attorney's office to draft up easement documents to get additional easement through this area. And then the other option would be to look at centering it in the easement. I was looking at, you know, is there somewhere in the middle where we could shift it a little bit to the east and that might be an option, but certainly I'd like to get council's direction as what your preference is. And then if there's guidance, you know, if you want us to try to, to shift it a little further east and get it a little centered, we can certainly look at that. But again, I wanted to bring the information forward to council and request direction at this time.
And with the prescriptive easement as it sits, so it's still a lot of room for the project to still have 12 feet and...
So that's, that's a good question. So it's, it's currently approximately 12 feet at that location. To reconstruct it at its location, we would certainly need a right of entry from the property owners where work would take place outside of the easement. That, that tends to be a little bit of a gray area in my experience. You know, if you have, if you have something that's outside of an easement, but you need to work even further past the edge of that, that alleyway, the prescriptive right, my, my comfort level and the city attorney can certainly provide her opinion, since it is a legal opinion, but, you know, does the prescriptive right end right at that edge of the alley? And I would, in, in my, my past experience, I would go to the property owner to get a right of entry to do any work outside that, that edge.
Mayor Poppy?
Yep.
Allison, I see all kinds of different widths on this alley from down at 505 and 525. It looks like it's eight feet wide, excuse me, at 208 to 216, 217, it looks like it's 10 and 11 foot wide. And up where the grapevines are, it's 12 feet wide. If we kept it within the, the easement, you know, where it currently is, from say 225 north, 224, 232, 233, what would our width be if we stayed out of that two-foot easement? Would we be at eight, 10 feet?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hall, we would, if we kept that, the existing alignment, shaved it to keep it within the easement, we'd be approximately 10 feet wide. And thank you for bringing that up because that's one of the things I came up with is, do we want to look at an option of getting a narrower alley? And the challenge is, is that this, where this, this occurs, it's at the, at the entrance of the alley. And so we need that, we need a width there, and I, and I believe Public Works Director Walt Billig can attest to this, garbage trucks already go past the, the curb line of the, of the alleys as they turn in through there. So I would, I would venture to say that this is kind of a critical point where we would want to see that 12-foot width alley, just so that we can accommodate those wider turns of those garbage trucks going down there.
Do we have an approximate cost to move that utility pole? Because that's going to be expensive.
So the, the cost of the utility pole relocation, I believe, lies with the utility company. I would have to check and see how they're, what they're, whatever agreement's in there, but typically if, if a utility is within the way of a project, they are responsible for moving it and we just assist in helping them find the appropriate location. But if that's something that the council would like more direction on, I can certainly bring that back. But that's, that's my recollection.
When you say the garbage truck is turning in, are they heading east or heading west when they enter into that? Because if they're heading west, they should be able to make a wide turn. If they're going east, I can see the short turn and maybe it's just that they have to realign their route.
So I'm not, I'm not certain what their, what their route is through here, but either whether they're turning east or west or coming in from the north side, it's, it's making that, that turning radius on the, to get the, the front wheels, the rear wheels to follow through there, and that's usually what causes the challenges, the, the rear wheels will, will go off the side of the, of the apron or the alleyway. And that's, we're seeing that in other alleys and, and my concern is with going even narrower through there, that instead of having one tire track off, off the side, we'd see, you know, two feet past, and that could be quite disruptive.
And again, if they move that power pole... And again, if they move that power pole, that's going to disrupt the power for X amount of time for the residents that are attached to that.
Correct.
That could, that could be some time. That could be a couple of days without power.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hall, I'm not, to be honest, I'm not certain what the timeframe is on relocating an overhead power pole. If that, again, if that's something that the council would like staff to get more information on, happy to do that and bring it back at the next meeting.
And then what happens with those heirloom grapevines? Are they going to get, be gone?
Okay, yeah. So Mayor Poppy, Councilmember Hall, that's, that's the challenge, right? Is, I don't know if grapevines are able to be dug up and relocated. I, I don't have that area of expertise to be able to tell you if they're, or if they're, if they're touched, they're, they're done. I, again, I was, it was something that was brought to my attention, and I just, I felt that that was something that was important to the, it was something that was important to the resident, and since I knew of that, I would convey that to the council. And again, I'd be happy to get more information on that if that's something the council wants. If the council wants to look at centering it on the easement and understand, you know, the, the downtime for the electrical, can grapevines be relocated? I'm happy to bring that information back. I think certainly, in, in, in my, in my eyes, it's the, the proximity of the, the garage slash shed. I'm not sure what, I didn't look in great detail as to what kind of structure it is, but at two three three six, that, the side of that building would be pretty much at the edge of the alley.
Mr. Ray.
I guess, you know, I lean towards the, there's a couple of things, I guess. One, we, we live in a quirky old town. You know, there's lots of quirky old things that happen. Most of us have done, you know, some sort of house renovation projects where you start peeling back layers and you find all kinds of interesting things. And so, and it's also part of what gives it, gives this, gives this town its charm. I think we have to be really, really careful with this because I think we're already, we're already doing something that's being, that's become disruptive to, to people in our community. There are people that are obviously for it. There are people that are against it for a variety of different reasons, financial reasons, whatever it may be. But I think we need to move forward with this project in a way that is the least disruptive to the people that it impacts the most. It's super easy for me to sit up here and say, yeah, do all the alleys. I don't have an alley. Okay, I, I don't, I didn't, it doesn't impact me. But I wouldn't be doing my job up here if that's what I did. I think that this alley, as we heard earlier tonight, that, you know, this alley's been working as it is for a very, very long time. And I think, in, in moving forward, I think it can continue to work, leaving it as close as it possibly, as we possibly can to how it is. But I think getting that information on the power poles and the, you know, all of those, and the costs and all that kind of stuff, I think, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't gather as much information as we possibly could before moving forward, making this decision. But I think ultimately, we really do have to, you have to do what's best for the whole. You have to do what's for the good of the community, for the long-term vision of everything. But if we can do so with that, with being as, as least disruptive to the community members that it impacts the most, I think that that's something that we as a council should look to, to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Allison, as a person who has grapevines in their yard, I've tried to kill a couple of them. You can't. But an heirloom one, I understand. That's a long time. And, and I've got grapevines that are growing now that are probably twenty, thirty years old. In a lot of foreign countries, they transplant grapevines, but again, they're not heirloom ones. They're just one off another. And I, I'm with Councilmember Cook. Let's make it work the way it is.
Mayor. Couple, couple of questions. So speaking about the grapevines, are the grapevines currently in the city right-of-way?
Yes, they're in the easement area.
Okay. So what if, you know, when your main concern has to do with the ingress off of whatever that road is up there on the north side, what if you just widen that apron out? Would that give the truck enough time to turn if we left the alley the way that it is?
Mayor Poppy, Councilmember Schultz, I think if, if the council would like to look at options to get it a little narrower there on the, on the north end, what I would like to do is during final design, get somebody from our transportation group to go and, they can do the turning radius when trucks go in, so for a garbage truck, and run that through there, and then we can see if we, what we can do up in that area to, if we can narrow the alley, but provide a wider apron for a garbage truck to navigate, and then get them straightened out. If that's something the council.
I, I, I mean, I'm sure, as probably everybody in this room has, been around on a Monday morning when those trucks are flying around. I'm not totally convinced it's always the, the size of the entrance that's the problem, as much as it is the speed of the driver or competency of the driver, because they're whipping in and out of there a lot. But, but yeah, I think, I think giving all options on the table with trying to make it as least disruptive as possible to this, to the people of the alleyway, I think would be, would be really, really, and I like Councilmember Schultz's idea of just widening the apron, but maybe maintaining the alley.
Because if we move, if we widen that apron out, if that's really our primary problem, that's fully on city right-of-way. That's just going to impact a little bit on that side, less impact than through here. It's unfortunate that several times throughout the history of our city, we've had people putting stuff on easements without checking with the city first. It's like, well, it looks like I can go here, but you really can't go here. And, and so that's always somewhat troublesome. But if we can figure out a way to make this work without, without incurring the additional expense, I don't personally have any trouble. Pending more information, I don't have any trouble with leaving the alley the same that it is now and mitigating some of that, but having more information come back from you regarding those different options, I think would be very helpful to make a final decision on this.
Well, I appreciate the feedback. So what I'll do is I'll provide this guidance to the design group, and we'll, we'll move forward with the design to this effect because we are a month between now and the next meeting. I will look at bringing this to that first meeting in January, along with, I think, I have to refresh my memory when we were looking for approval of plans and specifications, if, I think it was the second meeting in January. But again, to close the loop on that, give the council the information. I have, I appreciate all the feedback, and we'll move forward based on your guidance.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ten B, approved purchase of the fire department radios. Chief, welcome.
Welcome, Mayor, council, and staff. We are here looking to update, oh, I have, oh, Captain Luke Churchill. He, he's did a lot with the radios too. So if we have more info, he can help us, help you out. Oh, we're just looking to up, update our outdated radios that we have with a lease of thirty of them, which would involve everything that we need for them. So that would be the microphones, the chargers for them, and batteries. Like we talked about, they're the first gen radio. Like a computer, there's new technology out there. I mean, kind of like the first two that we talked about. It's a big improvement in this radio.
I mean, do you guys want to hear some of kind of like the specs on the new radios versus old, or what are you guys looking for for information?
I think just, you know, just some of the things we may be missing, you know, that we're beginning, beginning with the new radios for, you know, safety and, you know, and, you know, safety of the membership.
As of, as of right now, we do not have a radio for every member of our fire department. So when we are going into a house fire, typically it'll only be the officer that has a radio, and depending on who that officer is, if they are issued a radio, there might be a spare radio in our truck that can go to the crew. Otherwise, it's just the officer on the truck and the driver on the truck who's staying outside to pump for our fire. That can be incredibly dangerous. If somebody falls through the floor, especially if it's that officer who has the radio, and he can't call for help, well, now we have a big problem. We have a big gap in our time before that crew can get outside and say, hey, we need help, right? So the, the safety factor of getting all of our members a radio for, for when we're, we're doing these things is really, really important. Some of the other big things that are coming with the new generation of the radios is the encryption keys. So now our radios can be encrypted. So if the county decides to move forward with their ideas of encrypting the radio systems, we are prepared for that instead of scrambling at that time. The other thing is, is the immediate programming. So right now, if we need to change anything with any of our channels or any of our radios, they have to go into Hennepin County to be changed. With this, they can do over-the-air updates, so they can send out a mass update, change all of our, our zoning and radio stuff. And then once you power the radio on, it's immediately available for, for that radio. But yeah, those are, those are kind of the big, big items of it.
Any other questions, council?
Mayor Poppy. Mike, the county is buying them for like, what, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars? And then leasing them back to us for what, twenty thousand dollars?
So, so correct, that one eighty-one is the purchase price of the radios versus the lease price of twenty-nine hundred.
Missed that twenty-nine hundred because I've got down here twenty thousand, I'm five hundred and eight dollars.
Correct. That, that twenty thousand dollar mark is for all the accessories that come with it. So, so things like speaker mics, chargers for our radios, spare batteries, because our current radios, we have a few that are down just simply because we cannot get batteries from Motorola. So we're looking to future-proof that a little bit and including in our current purchase, a, a handful of spare batteries.
So you'll lease them for twenty-nine hundred bucks, but the extra two thou, or twenty thousand five hundred and eight is for all the accessories that we need?
Correct.
So it's, for the first year, it's like twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars and change? And then it's, then it's twenty-nine hundred after that?
So, so that twenty-nine hundred is a month, not, not.
Oh, a month, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Otherwise, that, that twenty thousand dollar charge is just a single time.
Right, right, okay.
And the plan is, is that the twenty thousand charge, the one-time charge, come out of the CIP? We have it.
Sure.
And then the rest will be budgeted yearly through the fire department budget to cover the costs of the lease. And we've done that several times, even for police radios and
Right.
other things.
And, Mr. Mayor, and we have, just to point out, this is a 2025 expenditure, so we have this in the budget.
Yes.
Adequately funded.
That, would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor Poppy.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to purchase the fire department radios.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the purchase, but we're leasing the radios.
One purchase, one lease.
Yeah, one purchase, one lease.
Yeah, so that, that, I just want to clarify that.
Yep, one purchase, one lease.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the purchase and the lease of the fire department radios, seconded by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ten C, approve 2025 fee schedule.
Mayor and council, we had actually no changes in our fee schedule for this year, for into 2025. We sent this around to staff, and we saw that there, there was no fees. But this is a one-time deal. We have to do it every year, and we can bring it back if we find that there's some fees that do go up, or we find that our staff time is taking longer on certain aspects of the fee schedule, so, but we do have to approve it once a year, so. This is our time.
Okay, we look for a motion to approve the resolution adopting the fee schedule.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the fee schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Attorney Teacher, please.
This is Resolution sixty-nine. Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye, motion passes four to zero. All right, ten D, adopt 2025 city budget and tax levy.
Mayor and council, you'll see attached is the budget. Currently, it's what we discussed on November, I believe it was November twenty-fifth at the work session. The proposed is the same, the four, four point five percent. The levy is just over five. There's the revenues and expenses, expenditures that are listed here, and then our current tax levy. By passing the proposed 2025 budget, the city will increase the total tax capacity rate from sixty-four point eight in 2024 to sixty-nine point nine six in 2025. There are two attached resolutions the city council should consider approving. The first approves the final budget and tax levy, and the second approves the city's annual debt service levies for 2025. And council will need to pass both.
Council, questions?
Yeah, I've got some questions and concerns. The actual for 2023 was two million seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Actual for 2024, which you're now is two million four hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. That two million four eighty-three included three hundred and ninety-some thousand dollars for the purchase of three squad cars and one Public Works vehicle. So that should be off this year of 2025. Bringing our 2024, if we subtract that down, we're down to a little over two million one hundred thousand dollars. And we save a hundred thousand dollars from the dual role of the city administrator slash police chief. So in actuality, we're raising our proposed levy if we go from 2023 to 2025 because of the anomaly of 2024 with the purchase of the vehicles, we're raising it about five hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not in favor of that.
Mayor and council, I'd like to respond to that. The, the three squads and the Public Works vehicle were financed by the issuance of some two thousand twenty-four GEO equipment certificates. Three hundred and fifty thousand was the estimated cost for that. So neither that, that borrowing nor those expenditures for those capital items is included in this budget, so.
Gary, I'm going to interrupt you because I sat out in the audience last year at about this time, and I came up to the mic and I asked about the three squad cars that were included in the budget of three hundred and ninety-some thousand dollars in a Public Works vehicle. And I was told there's ninety-some thousand dollars apiece, and it was going to be put right onto the 2024 levy, and that the, we had to take it out of CIP because there was a purchase of a building. And that's how that came about to buy those on the, on a bond for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I realized it's seventy-some thousand dollars to pay off that bond, but that, we were told as, as citizens, and I sat out in that audience, and there were others sitting out there too, questioning how much the squad cars cost. And when, at that time, Chief Shane told us that it was X amount of dollars for the squad and X amount to equip it, brought it up to about ninety-some, ninety-two thousand dollars approximately, ninety thousand dollars approximately for each vehicle and then Public Works, and it was all on the general levy. And that's when it got changed, was middle of 2024, when they floated the bond to buy that, those vehicles, because we had to purchase them or put the order in long enough in advance, and then they bought the Osseo Press Building. And Councilmember Cook and myself were not on the council at that time. I sat out in the audience. I questioned a lot of it. And now I'm up here and I'm bringing it back that yes, truly, that it was in the 2024 budget to, to buy those four vehicles.
They would have been contemplated to have been purchased out of the Equipment Capital Improvement Fund, not the general fund at the time. And at the, as we moved forward that, with that, with that, I believe with the council's direction and working with the financing folks, that it would be prudent to finance those four vehicles over a five- or six-year period with equipment certificates as opposed to using the equipment capital improvement money. So, so we can, we can compare that number in, as we're looking at comparing levies from one year to the next.
Again, Gary, I sat out in the audience when it said it was in the budget. I'm not saying you didn't, you're not telling the truth, but I'm telling you what I was told when I sat up that mic, that it was three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for four vehicles, and it was putting on, put on the general levy for 2024. And then afterwards, it was brought out that it was And then afterwards, it was brought out that it was that they bought the building and it was coming out of the C I P. And it was bonded for. To me, that's a heck of a jump from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five of over six hundred thousand dollars. And I can't go along with that big of a jump.
The uh, the purchase of those vehicles was not included in any of the levy information for for twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-five. It was um, initially, the discussion was whether it was going to be purchased. Those vehicles were going to be purchased with monies that um, get transferred annually. We make an annual transfer as part of the general fund budget. We move some money from the general fund over to the Equipment Capital Improvement Fund. And we 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 manage those capital improvement funds and we look at what's the what's uh, capital equipment requirements. We did the same thing with facilities and parks and and street. We look at the what's required in the net, the immediate year and two and three, four years out, so that we have a plan that we can finance those particular items. And and um, they were on the uh, radar as as items that needed to be purchased, but that certainly was not intended that it was going to be financed by one jump, one bump in the uh, uh, general fund tax levy.
Now, we look for a motion to approve the budget and property tax levy, and then we need a separate one for the debt levy as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five city budget and general tax levy and adopt the attached resolution.
I got a motion by council member Schultz to approve the budget and property tax levy. Is there a second?
Second.
By council member Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, attorney teaching, please.
This is resolution number seventy, council member Schultz.
Aye.
Council member Cook.
Aye.
Council member Hall.
Nay.
Mayor Puffy.
Aye, motion passes three to one. Now, we look for a motion to approve the debt levy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five debt service levy and adopt the attached resolution.
I got a motion by council member Schultz to approve the debt service levy for twenty-twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Cook, any further discussion? Seeing none, attorney teaching.
Council member Cook.
Aye.
Council member Hall.
Nay.
Council member Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Puffy.
Aye, motion passes three to one. Right, ten. E would be the wage.
So yep, that's the new E.
Yep, approved twenty-twenty-five wage increase for city staff. Questions on that? Now, we look for a motion.
I actually do have a question.
Yep.
So. And so, and it's just something that, and I don't know, because of the fact that budgets have been approved and things like that, it's just something that I think we should at least get on our radar. Um, and that is, I was, had the good fortune the other night of being able to be at the fire relief uh, meeting. Um, and it just got me thinking about some of the things that I saw on on um, the wage schedule with where where we currently pay our paid-on-call firefighters, just in comparison to some of the other city positions that we have. Um, and I was looking at it and compared to a C S O, or even our 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 part-time uh, public works employees. And it's, you know, two dollars below where those other, th- those other positions are at. Um, and these are people that require an extensive amount of training. Um, they do a lot of different things for the city. I mean, the work that they're literally putting their lives on the line when they walk in, they go into these buildings. Um, it just seems to me that in comparison to some of the, the way we're paying some of the other positions in our city, um, that it's something that we should, I think, at least look to make some changes with moving forward. I don't know that tonight's the night to do that. I'm I'm not sure, uh, with budgets already being approved. But um, I would sure like to see um, our paid-on-call firefighters um, compensated a little bit more for what they do um, i- in the sense of if I I've got a paid-on-call firefighter making eighteen dollars ninety-two cents an hour uh, and a public works part-time employee making just over twenty dollars an hour, and a C S O making over twenty-one forty an hour, or making about twenty-one forty an hour, and I would think you're paid for odd ti- uh, paid part-time firefighter and your C S O are going to be s- should, and in my opinion, should be similarly similarly compensated. So just something that I at least wanted to get on the radar as we talk about this, as we look at some of these these wages um, that are being being thrown out. I think it's um, something that uh, is important, and I think that what these guys do is i- i- is really, really, really matters. And and as our first responders, as you know, as uh, I was just talking to my neighbor the other day, and and there was a situation at church yesterday, and the first people there were the firefighters, you know, and it's like, they're they're not just putting out fires, they're our first responders to medical calls, they're our first responders to a lot of different things. And I just, I would, I would like to see that that to be a s- a goal of our of of our city moving forward is to maybe get them at least on the same page as some of these other positions that we pay in our city, so that's all.
Mayor Puffy.
Yep.
I concur. It's, again, they risk their lives, they're on call twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-four days, because the one day they have their fundraiser or celebration thingy, and they can be interrupted at any time, you know, sleep, they go to accidents, they go to fires. It's a dangerous job, and to be paying them, oh, and they, some of them leave their job. You know, they might be making forty, fifty bucks an hour and eight, because they're a firefighter, they come, and we're going to pay them eighteen dollars and ninety-two cents an hour. Way back when, we were paying them way below minimum wage, we brought that wage up finally, and I believe that we need to progress this up, like council member Cook said, at least to like a C S O's pay. Not to to diminish the fact of, you know, the part-time public works or the C S O, but fire department's very valuable to this community. And I know for one, because they came to my house when my son set our garage on fire accidentally, and they were there and they saved the house. The garage was lost, but that's that's what you have insurance for, and it was fabulous to see all of them show up. And there were departments from Brooklyn Park and Maple World also assisting, and they got the fire all quickly. So yeah, they're underpaid, and I agree with you. And again, that would ha- also have to increase the lieutenant and the captain and the chief, et cetera. So that that needs to be put on the radar real fast.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in support of uh, having the fire chief uh, take a look at that and bring us forward a proposal in twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, because we have ratcheted it up over, I mean, twelve bucks not that long ago, wasn't it, is what you guys are getting paid? So I mean, we've.
Was significantly, significantly less.
Yeah, yeah.
It was just one that, it was just one that when I saw the structure, I was like, it kind of jumped off the page. I mean, I was like, what?
And they have to go to school, they train, they do all kinds of things.
Now we have a chief that can dig in on that, so.
Yeah, I let the chief do it.
Yep. Okay.
With that, I would like to make a motion to approve the uh, wage.
Mayor, mayor, if if you're making a motion, I did make a mistake on this list, the fire chief's not on it. So if we can just add to your motion that he gets added at forty-five, twenty-one for the fire chief. Sorry.
Good.
Now you're gonna make this so much harder.
I apologize.
I would like to approve the twenty-twenty-five wage increase for city staff.
Would you like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve, I would like, no, I just want to approve. I don't want to make, can we just do it? No, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve uh, the twenty-twenty-five wage increase for city staff with the addition of the fire chief at forty.
Five, twenty-one.
Forty-five, twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by council member Cook to approve the wage increases with the addition of the fire chief, seconded by council member Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, ten F, approve revisions to personnel policy.
I've got a lot of questions. As usual, and I talked to the city attorney about one beforehand, and I can't find it right now, but it talks about smoking, and it says they have to be at le- at least eighteen years old. The state law says twenty-one, so we need to correct that.
Give me one second.
Yeah.
I'm I'm getting, I've been, I've been all over in the packet here, so I'm trying to find my spot, if you don't, if you, just give me one second, okay.
What page is it on, do you?
I, the agenda, it's sixty-two is the start.
No, I mean, on I I on the uh, policy, I was trying to find.
It's page sixty-two is where the, or sixty-three is where it starts.
On that, but I mean, is there a page on the policy, because it goes seventeen, eighteen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The smoking part or the the what, the change?
Smoking part, particularly.
Okay.
That's the drug-free workplace.
Yeah, drug-free, okay, that's where it says.
Yep. There's a lot that I've found that we're going to have to comb through uh, with this personnel policy that's on my twenty-twenty-five agenda to do, so we will do that. But the big change, um, mayor and counsel, was with the adopted budget, there's the opt-out of fourteen-seventy-five. It was listed as five hundred in the current personnel policy, so I wanted to just update that number uh, within the personnel policy since uh, we did adopt that tonight.
I've got some other things I'd like to talk about here. You know, we talk about smoking, here, it's on page ten, I just found it. It says smoking, and it says smoking of any kind and cleaning pipes, blah, 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 blah. Employees eighteen and over can smoke only during their breaks and lunch. That should be changed to twenty-one.
Yep.
Um, when you include this brand-new policy that you're going to update, I would like to see pre-employment drug testing. I believe in a lot of workplaces, I know where I, the industry I came from, there's pre-employment drug testing always. Uh, do you have that council member Cook in the schools? Good. Uh, and then maybe random drug testing and, you know, let's, we need a whole drug policy of employees with drugs. And then I'm really concerned about the accruing of eight hundred and forty hours of P T O. Other cities are anywhere between four hundred and six hundred hours. Are there vacation, are there holidays taken out of that eight hundred and forty hours of their P T O, or is that above and beyond the P T O that they accrue?
They get the day off. Well, it depends who you're talking about.
So the non-bargaining unit.
Non-bargaining unit employees get the day off, it does not come off their P T O.
It's just a day off.
It's a day off.
They don't get paid for it, unless they take a P T O.
Nope, they get paid for it, it's a day, it's a paid day off.
I would like to see that come out of the P T O. That's my opinion, because then you're adding at eight hundred and forty hours, if you reach the maximum, which I hope nobody's that close to now, that's twenty-one weeks, and if you had fourteen holidays, that's another three weeks, you're at twenty-four weeks, that's almost a half a year. For concern about long-term disability, I believe the city must then look at a long-term disability policy for the employees and non-bargaining unit employees. Because I don't know what the bargaining unit, do the bargaining unit employees have a disability policy?
We all do.
You all do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, if we're worried about long-term disability, then I believe that we should, we should encourage that instead of taking P T O and having such a high P T O. Again, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of weeks. We ran into that, or the, not you and I, council member Cook, but the other council members ran into that when a former city administrator left with uh, council member Rickman, you were on the council at the time, what was it, eleven, twelve, thirteen hundred hours of P T O?
I'm no longer a council member.
No, former council member, when you were on there.
I don't have the information in front of me.
Was, I don't have that either.
It was, it was over a thousand hours, and that's wrong. And I believe that you, you know, once you reach that cap, you shouldn't accrue anymore, and if you go over, you lose it. You've got twenty-one weeks at eight hundred and forty, that's a lot of time off. I I I think this whole thing needs to be rewritten and brought back to the to the council with all the changes and highlighted any changes that have been made. Instead of, the only one that's highlighted is the five hundred dollars to to fourteen hundred and something. I I believe that that should be phased in also, instead of all at one chunk. You know, maybe make it, because we've got a property, five central avenues coming off the TIF rolls in twenty-twenty-seven, and that'll put a nice chunk of money into the city coffers, and then maybe we could look at, you know, maybe two hundred and fifty bucks each year. How many employees are on this five hundred dollar currently and going to go to fourteen hundred and seventy?
All of us.
So everybody, if they don't get this, would get fourteen hundred and seventy bucks?
No, if they opt out of our health insurance, we talked about that at the at the work session.
Right.
Yeah, so if they opt out and don't take health insurance through the city, yes, they will get the fourteen-seventy-five per month.
That's a lot of money. How many employees is it right now that are opting out?
I think everything had to be approved tonight before we'll really know the effect, because they couldn't opt out or do anything until this was passed.
Okay, but so are any of them collecting the five hundred dollars right now?
There's a handful.
Handful?
Mm-hmm. I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
That could be six, seven thousand dollars of of money per year, or per, let's see, that'd be per month. Times twelve, that's, that adds up fast.
Mm-hmm. It was all in the current budget.
I understand that, but again, I wasn't in favor of the uh, budget. I'm not in favor of this either, that's, that should be phased in and not just chunked in right away. And I believe that this should all come back to the council after the first year with changes in it and you know, the the groomer, the eighteen years old, the drug policy, all of that should come back to the council.
Yeah, I think he mentioned that that's what he's planning on doing for twenty-five.
And then for clarification, there is a drug policy in here.
There is a drug policy, but not, not a uh, pre-employment.
It doesn't mandate pre-employment drug test.
And I think there should be a pre-employment. And also, we probably should have something in there about what if a, what happens if an employee tests positive? What are, what are we going to do, our, I believe, maybe the city attorney, you can't fire him on the first offense, can you? Or do you have to offer him help?
Uh, mayor and counsel, so the drug testing laws are quite complex, actually. There's state and federal law, and it depends on which employer you're talking about.
Right.
Um, so that's a difficult question to answer, just as a blanket answer, because there's different rules and laws depending on if you have an employee with a C D L or not. Um, pre-employment testing is also an an interesting area right now because of the legalization of cannabis. And so um, that's become more complex than it used to be. Um, pre-employment testing is also something that really needs to be evaluated based on the position that you're hiring for. Is is uh, are there safety-sensitive duties or not, or is there driving involved? I mean, there's lots of different factors and questions that go into determining what kind of a drug testing policy you can have, including what the applicable laws are.
I know in the industry I came from, again, they were bargaining unit employees, and I'm, I'm presuming the bargaining unit employees that you have have a drug policy where it's uh, get help instead of fire or terminate.
There's no policy on it.
Okay.
It's all with internal discipline procedures that we have.
I know in the industry I came from, if you test positive, you go through treatment, and the employer takes you back. And something like that, it's proactive, that the the party should get help. Uh, and you know, I'm with the, I was with the National Safety Council, still am, and they uh, they tell you that one out of four, one out of three to one out of four people in a workplace, no matter what workplace you're in, are on a prescribed medication. We don't know what, it can be all the way from painkillers all the way down to, you know, um, an aspirin a day, because doctors will prescribe an aspirin a day. So I believe that we need to look at that instead of disciplining the person, get them some help. So I think that should be put into the policy.
Comments? Okay, we look for a motion then.
So can I ask a clarification question? Are are we, are we approving the revisions as final? Are we approving the revisions and then we're going to have more conversation about this moving forward, or is this like, once we approve this, we're done?
For this meeting, it'd be done, and then I will take any comments and go back, and that was on my list of things to do in twenty-twenty-five was do a full review on our personnel policy.
That was just my.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We reviewed the personnel policy and made several updates over my tenure. Um, it's kind of a living, breathing document that changes with the times. Um, you know, to council or to uh, um, councilor Tichin's point, you know, there is a little bit of a quagmire right now with the legalization of cannabis. So it's would be diffi- it would be premature until we get those things all worked through to deal with that. But I completely agree with you in the fact that we do need to re-look at all this stuff going ahead. The primary part about why this is on tonight is so that we can make the changes to the employee health benefits, which I also want to put in there um, through the budgetary process, with that change, we saved forty thousand dollars a year um, right up front on. With that change, we saved forty thousand dollars a year right up front on healthcare costs, if I'm not mistaken. So, we actually gave them far better options for them and their families to cover a lot more of their medical stuff while still saving forty thousand dollars in the budget for the year.
Wait, then I would like to make a motion to approve the revisions to the personnel policy, including the twenty-one-year-old. Can we do that?
We can do that.
That's just.
Got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the revisions, including the, changing the smoking age to twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three to one. All right, ten G, approve accounts payable. Questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
I would like to ask council a question. There is, I just, it, it was brought to my attention and I think it's, it makes sense for me to, if it's necessary for me to recuse myself from this vote, being that my business, unbeknownst to me, must have been done through my business partner, there's a purchase from the city to my business and I don't want it to look as though I am promoting my business through city funds. So, is there any sort of conflict of interest there that I need to be worried about or should I abstain or should I not?
Mayor and council, no, this is just a routine approval of bills, you don't need to, that, that would not present a conflict of interest for you.
Someone would like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
Got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's accounts payable. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cook, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Administrator report.
I have none.
Assistant Administrator report.
Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah to everyone. See you next year.
Council and attorneys, report attorney teaching.
I have no report.
Okay, Councilmember Hall.
I had a big speech lined up I was gonna do, but I decided not to do it. I just want to wish everybody a good, happy Christmas, Hanukkah, any other holiday that you celebrate, and if you don't celebrate any of the holidays, have a good couple of days off.
Councilmember Cook.
I want to reiterate my comments from the EDU meeting earlier, just thanking everybody who was involved in helping put on Small Business Saturday, the Mini Dazzle and all the different events that we're having in town. Thanks, special thanks to all the people that did all the work to get Central Avenue looking as amazing as it always does for the holidays. It's, it's such a huge thing when I have friends come over and they drive down the street and they're like, this is so cool that you guys have this, it's such a neat thing. So, so I'm just grateful and appreciative for all of that. And I do, I would like to take, take a second to just formally thank Councilmember Hall for all of his dedication and hard work to the city of Osseo over a prolonged period of time. And even in the short conversations that we have had, I've learned and I appreciate that and I am grateful for that.
Thank you.
So, thank you to you and happy holidays to everybody, whatever it is that you celebrate. And hopefully you're able to spend some time with the people that you love. So, that's all I got.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. So, I'd like to, like everybody else, wish everybody a happy holidays, no matter what holiday you support. And also thank everybody for coming out to Mini Dazzle. It's always a great opportunity to get together as a community. The other thing is no, no, I've never seen another community that can build such a good bonfire. And there was that one year where we accidentally melted the siding on Real Life, but, you know, that was just a little.
There was a light pole once too.
Yeah, we might, yeah, we did a light pole too and so, we've tuned, we've dialed that in a little bit, but it's always a great event and just look forward to 2025.
All right, well, thank you. Happy holidays to everyone. Just a general announcement, Toys for Tots, you want to talk about that a little bit? Just to update people on what we're at, drop boxes, where we can do that.
There, I don't know where all the drop boxes are off the top of my head, but there's many drop boxes.
Throughout the city of Osseo.
Throughout the city of Osseo, at City Hall, there's a Dropbox at the Police Department. We're gonna be collecting, I believe, eighteenth, I believe, and then, yeah, and then we will be, you might see us on the news because we'll be going to Golden Valley on Friday the twentieth to deliver all the toys and be a part of their, Take Care Eleven, I believe, we drive to there and they film us, so I'll be involved in that. You'll probably hear his name, Maddie Zitzelsberger. She is doing a lot of our, all of our Shop with a Cop. We've got a coat drive going on right now, that'll be on, that, we're taking that in on Friday. Lieutenant Kinsey's involved in that and then Toys for Tots also. So, she's been really busy this fall and wintertime promoting all of our cool little community events and things, so.
All right, yeah, thank you. And also, we do have some commission members needed for 2025, so if you have an interest in getting involved in the City Economic Development Authority, six-year term, there's two positions open for that currently. Planning Commission, three-year term, two positions on the Planning Commission. Public Safety Advisory Commission or Committee, one position. Open for an Osseo business appointee. So, if you own a business in town and would like to be involved in the Public Safety Advisory Committee. And then the Park and Rec is two positions open for a three-year term. So, could submit letters of interest to City Hall, to the City Clerk with your name and address and background, and those will be presented for the council's vote after the first of the year. And then City Hall's closed the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for the Christmas holiday and again, December thirty-first and January first. So, allow everyone to enjoy the holidays with their families. So, with that, motion adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz. Is there a second?
I'm gonna do it if you're not going to.
Second.
I got my Councilmember Cook, non-abusive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?